Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Regular Meeting for Tuesday, August 29th. It's at 6 o'clock. We're at the town hall. We have Select Board members Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, and Matt Yeddy, Grill Master. Sharon Russell is not present, but I have a brief report on how she's doing. So please rise and join me for the pledge.
The pledge begins with the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I think. I think everyone here has signed the orders, so thank you for that. We have two sets of minutes. One for the, we'll start with the August 15th meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. None opposed, so I will circulate. Copy for signature. Next, we have the minutes of the meeting of August 17th. This was the special meeting that we had with the Planning Commission concerning the short-term rental ordinance. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's made by Matt, seconded by Joe. Discussion, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. All right. Board member announcements. Do we have any? Getting quiet. Okay. Update from the Select Board chair. A couple of quick things. The Circle, the first edition of the Circle to be published this fall. The deadline for submitting articles is September 15th for department heads and those who wish to put something in the Circle, September 15th. Sharon Russell is recovering. She is still in the hospital, but she is recovering from surgery. I spoke to her this afternoon. She's bored. She would rather be home. She's reading the newspaper to get what news she count of Rutland Town. You know, and she has, of course, comments about what she reads in the newspaper. So we had a nice little chat, and she sounded pretty good. I think it's going to be a bit of a haul for the recovery, but she's on the mend. So regards to everyone from Sharon. I think Carrie, you're going to be talking a little bit later about the meeting we had with TD Bank, so I'll leave that to your report. Okay, okay. I have not done the revisions that you wanted me to at the beginning, the intro to the short-term rental ordinance. I guess I got still on other stuff, so I'll try and do that for next meeting. I know that was really.
No rush.
Okay. And we did receive an environmental court decision. I believe I've shared it with you folks. Didn't I circulate it? Okay, in essence, it says that even though the in essence, it says that the Cortina must get an Act 250 amendment to run homeless housing there. And I will leave you to, I know you're here to talk with us, and we'll get to that in a minute. The immediate program, our appeal or our it was an appeal to the Environmental Court, was declared moot because of the particular program that was underway at the time which had ended, but that doesn't ob- 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 obliviate the need for an Act 250 amendment. So. Okay. We've got a couple of other things, but I think we can take them up when various department folks can. Big thank you, though, to everyone involved in the townwide celebration. I think it was a very successful event. We'll take a quick nose count later and maybe set the date for the next one, because we want to lock in our DJ, who's very popular.
Mike already booked him, so it's.
Fine. Well, I guess that takes care of that. All right. Is it the 24th?
That, if that's the Saturday in August, then yes.
Well, there's he gave us the 17th, and he gave us the 24th?
Oh, no, he was booked for the 24th with me, unless he reached back out to you.
He, no, he did not. So he booked the 24th with you?
I told him the 24th.
Okay. Okay, August 24th. Is that the last day? The pool is open?
The last day, yes.
Okay. That's 2024. August 24, 2024. That'll work. Thank you.
There you go.
So.
I kind of did that.
Do we need to vote on that other bill?
Let's do that. Well, we are on the issue of townwide celebration. I know some of the bills have come in and we've approved here, but one just came in today, and I've circulated among the Select Board. This is the invoice for Kamuta's Market. They provided the hot dogs, hamburgers, rolls, sausages, the veggies for the sausages, and then they, and they got good deals on the meat, and then they tossed in gratis, the ketchup mustard and relish. So total invoice $1,267.59. And we fed quite a bit, quite a few people, and we had some stuff left over. So is there a motion to approve so we can have Carrie get a check out to them and not wait two weeks?
Don't move.
Questions made and seconded. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So do you, you probably need this? Okay. Okay, I'll put it there. All right. So this is the time when we take questions or comments from the floor for people who are not otherwise. Yes, I thought you might. Why don't you come up here, please? How are you this evening?
I'm here on behalf of Cortina Inn as a former owner. And I want to introduce.
Could you introduce yourself and your, yes, thank you.
You know, and I want to introduce the new owner.
Okay.
Who's with me, you know?
Hi, my name is Drew. I'm going to be the new operations manager and owner of the Cortina Inn.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. We would like to set up a, you know, a special meeting, you know, with the board, you know, to discuss.
To discuss?
The ongoing issues, you know.
Okay.
You know, which were previously with the old owner. So the new owner want to take it over.
Okay.
So want to have a meeting with the board, you know.
Including the obligation to pay for the police services that are, okay, all right. We could do it a couple of ways. First of all, I guess I'll turn to the board. What's your feeling? Okay.
Keeping moving forward.
Okay. So, yes, we could meet with you for like a half hour before our next meeting, which is in two weeks. Is that acceptable?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
What date would that be?
We're looking behind you on the board. It will be September 12th. So we could meet with you at 5:30? On September 12th. And we, we hope to hear your long-range plans, you know, and your plans for obtaining permits if you're going in a different direction from, you know, a motel. And we'd also like to talk with you, and we, I think we would like Chief Dumas there as well. So I know you've been in touch with him.
Yes.
Thank you for putting the fence up. Is it up?
It's a, it will be ready by two or, two or, two or three more days, you know. So they're putting the, you know, the last pieces.
Okay.
You got the foundation in and the holes up and the crossbar up. They're just putting the fence and the privacy filter.
Okay, all right. How, how high is it?
Eight feet.
Okay, good.
It's quite high.
So we'll set that, and do you have anything else you'd like to visit with us about while you're here? Or we'll just wait till the, the meeting?
We'll wait till the meeting. Plans together, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we can have a discussion, and you can take it from there.
I think that would be fine. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Seeing you on the 12th.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the floor or public comments from anyone in the room or on the screen on the Zoom call? Okay, if not, we will hop into our agenda. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening. How is everyone?
How is everyone?
Good. Thank you, Chief, for your work at the townwide celebration. It was good to see the fire trucks there. I hope you talked some folks into joining the department. I noticed there was interest around the trucks, so fingers crossed on that.
Yeah, fingers crossed. We had a couple interested people, but we'll see what happens.
And thanks alone of your grill. Sorry, I did appreciate that. I tried to clean it somewhat.
No problem. You're welcome. Last couple of weeks, we've had probably five calls, I think. We've been more busy cleaning the station out, trying to get ready for the move, which is going to be tomorrow night. We'll have the building empty by tomorrow night when we leave. Everything will be up at the town garage. I've spoken with Dave a few times, so he's ready for us and see what happens, I guess.
Okay, very good. And thanks to the folks who are working on cleaning it out. We have, we, we had received a request or a question about what happens with the fixtures, such as the overhead doors, the Moline heaters, the things that will not be used in the new structure at McKinley Avenue. And I've checked with a couple of folks. I've talked with Sharon Russell, fire committee member, and she and I recommend that any fixtures that are salvageable, we essentially give to the fire department and allow them to make the determination and maybe get a little money for the benevolent thing that you have. Is that, and I spoke briefly with Chris about that. And if that's agreeable to folks, let's hear a motion to that effect.
Okay, just, I thought we did that last week, but didn't we?
To clarify, you mean so that members could obtain items in exchange for contribution is your?
Yes, I mean, hopefully it will be, there will be a contribution, but that is in the hands of the fire department, and the Select Board doesn't go out to, you know, post notices or ads or anything like that. We're out of the picture. It's up to the, the fire department. We're dumping it on you folks. Motion?
Someone.
Motion's made? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Other than, I thought we did this at the last meeting.
I think we talked about it.
I didn't know if we actually voted.
I don't think we actually voted on it, so let's, let's get that actually done, and then.
A lot of that's in progress already.
I sort of figured it would be, and I thought it would play a really quick catch-up tonight. So if there's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So you've got the fixtures, Chief.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't need anything, so. Mike, Row.
This with the move up, that means that the gate starting tomorrow is open, and hopefully the guys can make a couple extra sweeps, because they'll have to have access into the park. They'll really reopen the gate on the first of November, but now we're a couple months early, so they're just gonna, I just ask those guys to keep that in mind, patrolling up in there.
Right.
Hopefully that's part of it too, because they're gonna have to get down there to get in, and we're not gonna lock the front gate. So just an FYI, that came up.
The gate, the gate is still gonna be closed.
JP, is that you?
Yes, we're still gonna close the gate. It's just gonna be in a way that allows for quick access.
Okay, I, I just was making sure, that's all, because that typically happens. So if you guys have it figured out, fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, there's some nodding in the, Chris, do you, are you satisfied with the arrangement for quick access that has been made?
I'm satisfied, but I just have a bad feeling somebody's gonna drive through it, but be replaced, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, there's some headlights and a grill.
Well, Chris, if you have, you know, if you have one or two calls and it becomes an issue, just leave the gate open.
Yeah, really. Okay. Okay.
It's gonna be an interesting 10, 11 months.
I know.
With the stuff, so, and Dave will probably talk to us, but Thursday morning, two of the, well, the door, the front doors are all coming off Thursday morning. Two are going up to the cold storage building right there.
Correct.
And the other ones, I'm taken. So after Thursday, that building will no longer be secure.
Right, the old McKinley Station.
The old station. So that's just, they're going to, Chris, I've talked to Chris at length yesterday, and they're going to try to remove as much of the valuable material out of there as soon as possible. Because, you know, even though that's right next door to the state police.
Yeah.
And the city PD officer lives next door. Now, I think it just makes it a challenge, doesn't it, Eddie?
We don't want it to become a housing site.
Well, it'll only be four days, because when the, I believe the Fabian is supposed to be moving in on Monday.
Okay.
So.
It's coming down pretty fast after that, right?
Uh, they'll have it down in one day. I imagine. I don't know. I've been trying to find a home for some of the stuff, and whatever's left in there is, you know, JP may have some information, because I passed some stuff on to him, so there'll be more discussion this evening on it.
Okay. All right. Anything else for, for or from the fire chief?
I'm all set, unless you have a couple of questions.
No, and Select Board members? Nope, we're all set. Thank you very much, Chief, and thanks for cleaning out the building so well.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Evening.
Good evening.
One quick thing and two little longer things. Just a reminder, taxes are first installment due September 10th. I've put it in the paper that payments can be accepted Monday, because the 10th falls on a Sunday. So it'll be on time on Monday. So it's basically next week, pretty much. We've collected about 47% right now of our taxes. Feels like more, but. So that was the quick thing. The other two things are talking about the digital land record contract and talking about the committee meeting that we, well, it wasn't really a committee meeting. It was more of a one-on-one meeting with our bank. Which one would you like me to start with?
Why don't we do the COTS contract?
Really? Okay.
We're not prepared to sign it tonight, are we?
That is up to you.
Well, no, here's my question. Did Kevin get the changes that he wanted made?
All right, so Kevin emailed me about 4 o'clock today, and just so you know, so I've sent the contract out to all of you, I believe I did.
When was that?
Gave it to Bill for the packet.
COTS contract?
Didn't I give that to you, the COTS contract? I sent it to you in an email. Anyway, I did, anyway. Anyway. All right. So there's a contract. And I sent it to apparently just Mary and our lawyer, Kevin, and they both have reviewed it. Kevin went through it with a fine-tooth comb, gave me and Mary a summary of his thoughts about the contract, which I have his email with me also. Then today, he emailed me, because what he wanted was a working document of the contract to redline out and, because it can be amended, and he wanted to put in some additional things to the contract. I requested that to COTS, and their lawyer suggested you just use what we have and just kind of scratch off what you need and rewrite it. I'm leaving that up to Kevin to do, and he said that he has things, he, he has proposals, but he wanted to get the green light from the Select Board first. That was his exact words in his email. And so I said, I'd like to talk about it tonight, and he just kind of said, let them, let the Select Board know my thoughts, and I don't, he really didn't give me a rough draft of what he wanted to suggest to them.
You know, I think given, and this is a fairly substantial contract.
Yeah.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we put it on the agenda for next meeting? But in the meantime, get, circulate Kevin's redlined.
I'll get it. He didn't send it to me.
Yeah.
I'll ask him for it.
Really vote on something we haven't seen.
Well, I kind of figured that too, but he.
Yeah. Okay. My, my sense was that he felt there might be some movement from the COTS people on some of the changes he wanted to see. So I will, you know, you can also circulate his.
I can certainly send everything off to you, so you can.
To all of us, so we all see it soon.
Right. Just kind of to summarize his thoughts, you know, from a legal standpoint, he wanted to change a few things to make it right. I understood there, but he had a lot of questions, because we also talked over the phone, and he was wondering if we were all set to go with the technology
Right.
in the contract and make sure that it would actually work here. And that's what he didn't know until he talked to me that COTS actually did a test here
Okay, good.
of our technology. We passed with flying colors.
Okay.
We're, we're more than ready for a system like that. And also, the security feature is not a, a problem either.
Okay, and then there was a question about the two monitors or the two, two computer systems, one for searchers to use and one for you to use to scan. Do we need both is the question?
I honestly, in my opinion, don't think we need either of them from that company. And he said, we're more than, he meaning COTS, we're more than welcome to get a workstation if we needed one on our own with our own vendor that we usually do. All I really need is the scanner and the, the actual software to make the program run. We already have a workstation, and I already have a station that I record with anyway. So that's gonna be a savings right off the bat of almost $11,000.
It's pricey, okay.
Yeah.
Even if we do have to provide a, for the public.
It's, I mean, we have it already, and we have the, it's just literally the software and.
Okay.
So we, we won't need that. Our technology is good. So those were some major questions on Kevin's part, and I answered those.
Okay.
Those were very easy to answer for him. The other part, I feel like it's his, his knowledge of the legal world more than mine.
Yeah. So we'll look for his comments and the proposed contract, and stick it on the agenda for next meeting. Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Yep.
So that was that.
Where did, where in Howard did we budget for this? That's, how are we paying for it?
Yeah, there is, I think Carrie's proposal was that we take it from capital improvements, because it, it was.
It's a long, yeah. That's just something we, we were talking about the contract.
The huge.
What we haven't talked about. Where, where we're getting the money, but that makes sense to me.
Yeah, capital improvements make sense to me, too. I mean, it kind of falls under that category anyway.
Right.
We, we've over time allocated certain monies from that for the Public Safety Building, but we came in over, over what was expected last fiscal year as well. So I think we'll have, and this was a total of roughly a little over $50,000, but that's with the workstations. So now we're kind of thinking like 40, maybe even less, and we have that.
And then is there a per-year expense? So this is the initial cost.
This is the initial cost, and the monthly cost to keep the Record Hub, which is the online portal that researchers would use, is $270 a month. And then we also get the revenue from, so anybody at home can print off, if they so choose, certain land record documents, but they will have a choice of doing it per page, per time that they're doing that at their desk, or they could get a, like a subscription for a day or subscription for a month or something like that. Subscription fees go directly to COTS. The revenue that we, that the pages produce, if they print it off, come to us, and we get that in a lump, one lump sum.
So coming, coming up with the budget season, we'll need to look at something for that monthly and stuff.
That's right. That's right. So those are what, that's what I know so far.
So we'll take it up and hopefully have something to vote on next meeting.
I hope so, because the 17th is the end of this contract.
Okay.
So that would work still, right? Because the next meeting is the 12th.
12th.
12th, right. Okay.
We see that in an email form. We can all read it prior to.
Yes.
And then to be able to.
I have everything ready to send off to you minus Kevin's, whatever he has. So I'll work on him, but in the meantime, I'll send everything out to you guys. I can do that in the morning.
Okay.
You'll have it. So there's that. And then with the Public Safety Building on our minds, thinking about where we're, what our options are, moving forward to ask for the additional money that the voters approved has been on my mind. And I want to do this sooner than later. So I reached out, I, I started the process. It's just a basic preliminary, kind of like, here we are. I reached out to John Weston. He's our TD Bank representative. We use TD Bank in the municipality. He was kind enough, and he is kind and very knowledgeable, to come and meet with Mary and myself. We met this week with the understanding that I just wanted to know, on bank standpoint, what our options are for a substantial loan for construction, and we're thinking about $2.5 million around there for the Public Safety Building, the extra funds. So he kind of, he met with us for about an hour and gave us not only bank standpoint options, but he was looking out for us in general, because we are his customer, I would say. So he wants the best for us. So we, that was our first reach out. So we have options, and Mary, please chime in, because you're well-versed in this more than I am. We have some options. We could go the bank route for a loan. There's a lot of other things you can fill in here, but I'm just kind of touching on the big points. We could certainly go out to bond. We could ask for, if the bond timing isn't correct or doesn't line up with what we need at the time, because it's all about the application process in the bond world. We might need a bond anticipation note, but that's. And then also a line of credit is another option, an option that TD Bank doesn't specifically do, but other banks may do. Which brings me to the point of, again, beginning of the process, we're going to need to have a bigger discussion about this. I'm thinking a committee discussion to talk about our options. He suggested we really need to get a length of time pinpoint, pinpointed. We know roughly about the amount that we need, but with those two things, we could better reach out.
There was a third thing.
Was there?
Okay, the, we know the amount, which is two point five million.
That would be the maximum, right?
The maximum.
We may not need that.
And that's, yeah.
Okay.
And the length of time that we want to be paying on the note. So I think Senator Rutland was twenty years. Um, some of the um, bank options were ten years. So we, we need to, that's another thing we need to decide. What can the taxpayers? Bear, you know, knowing that there are other projects out there as well. And the third thing is the date. When we actually start drawing on that, because we've got a little time, we're still working off the ARPA funds.
So I had an opportunity to talk to JP.
Good.
So I. Relay to him what we had talked about at the last meeting that we would like um, a idea how far the. Roughly three million we have in hand will go.
Yeah.
So he's going, and I'm, since he's on, he probably will have something from VMS where they can kind of cost out. Project and see where we are, you know, how far that'll take us. That'll give you an idea.
Absolutely.
When.
Hmm.
When we got to start looking.
That was part of our discussion with John.
So hopefully we'll have that.
That will be kind of like the driving force, uh, just to get an idea. I did reach out to JP as well and he was kind enough to say when he gets that information, he will certainly pass it along. As of last night, he didn't have it. Maybe tonight he does. I don't know. But that's going to be a driving force.
Right.
Um, so we have. We have these options. Um, and again, you, you basically summed it up. We need, we need to all come together. And I would really like to be part of those discussions.
Yeah. I think that makes sense.
I mean, it does.
Are we a good credit risk? I mean. I mean, do banks look at a, as a town as being a good credit risk?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't have to put up collateral. Um, we do have to have authorization from the voters, which we already do. Um, municipalities. Are, are a lower risk than businesses. So we should be able to get a better interest rate. Um, one thing he said is, uh, well, a couple of things that I, I thought was valuable. Don't discredit going to the bond bank because sometimes because they pool the rest, their rates are lower.
Right.
Now, the irritation with them was we couldn't prepay. But they may have a package that would allow us to prepay for a slightly higher interest rate. So.
Some of those are options.
So that's another option. And he said, don't discount the smaller banks in the area because they may be more flexible. And be able to build something that we're more comfortable with. So he's also clear that we would have to go out. To solicit bids. I mean, I, we can't, you know, I said, you know, we have to do this. And he, he said, he understood fully. He was just giving us some background information, the way a bank would look at it. And he's going to be sending us. Um, what he gets as a banker from municipalities, asking them to bid on certain projects. So. That will give us an idea of what we should be asking for.
He hasn't sent it out.
Okay.
Yet. He said probably Wednesday, so maybe tomorrow. And he'd give us some ideas also of contacts for banks to send those things out to bid too. Um. He was talking about the interest rate too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Not to. I mean, it's going to be a driving force, but. We won't know the interest rate most likely until perhaps very close to the. To the approval.
So we're gambling right now.
And as we spend that money, I think we'll get a better handle from VMS on how much we're going to need.
Yeah.
You know, if there's no. You know, that there was that two, two hundred and fifty thousand contingency fund that is only if we made some errors as a town. Not as a contractor. So there's pretty likely we're not going to ever spend that.
Hmm.
So we may be, you know, and once they get closer, we'll be able to come up whether it's two point two or two, three, or whatever exactly we need.
Okay. So to Carrie's point, how do we want to handle this now? I mean, it, it was a kind of a briefing was what we got from him. We're going to get another briefing from on, on Friday.
Yes.
Um, from um, municipal bond bank about when, I want to find out when their next round of applications.
What I want to find out.
Because that may figure it. So I think once you, once we hear from VMS and we have that pay down or using schedule, so they'll know. They can tell us, say it's going to be.
Yeah.
March, April, the three million is going to be gone. We're going to need to pay these vendors and do this. So you. So that gives us January, February, say to start. Really concentrating and be nice if the round, you know, if we were going to the bond bank, if that was in April, say, or March, that we could apply.
So back to.
These will all tie together, right?
It's only, it's, it's Carrie right now and me, and it's not the personnel committee or uh, personnel and finance. So maybe it should be. Maybe it should be a full select board. How do you want to handle this?
Once you guys do, well, you're kind of doing the legwork and getting the options. So when you meet with somebody from the bond bank, we'll have some more options. And then we get the information from VMS, we'll know a timeframe.
Hmm.
Then, then we can decide.
Then we can maybe have a.
And it should be, I guess it's going to be the full board and, and it should be a meeting, you know, I mean, I like those meetings to be just for that.
Okay.
Not try to shoehorn it in between.
Okay.
This and that, because it, it, we sometimes tend to rush.
And when we get to crunching numbers on term and everything, we did, we did that poll board.
Yes.
Especially with all the thought they just.
Once you guys have done all the legwork and pick up, figure out the options. Then we got to look at what's going to be the best. We may end up with a, you know, I mean, the reason we were thinking conventional loan was because we wouldn't be saddled with. Uh, having to pay it off and go the whole term.
Right.
Which we had to do. Um, but. If you go shorter term.
Guy says.
Right. You go shorter term. The payments are going to be higher, obviously.
Yeah.
But you're going to pay a lot less interest. So there's pros and cons to both. We just got to decide what's best.
And that's what John was saying. We, we let, get everything laid out. And you, you say, okay, well, this bank has this long, but this interest rate. This one has a better interest rate, different length. So we're going to have to have that.
Do you want, are you thinking maybe you want to look at another bank or two?
Oh, we have to.
We have to. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I really wanted to get in with the bond bank and I like face to face. Conversations when it comes down to this important.
Yeah.
Um, stuff. So I asked this person to just kind of. Brief us on what do you know about this? Because it's my first time for a bond. I mean, it's not. You guys have been through this before, but it'll be nice to have the refresher for you and maybe some new ideas. I don't know, but. They're going to meet with us at ten thirty on Friday on Zoom.
That's about all you can do right now.
I think so.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I didn't want anybody to feel excluded from this information gathering. Um.
Please feel free to chime in. It's a big task.
Right. It is. And a lot of moving parts, but.
A lot.
We're getting there. Thank you, Carrie, for setting all of this up.
Yeah.
Uh, just to, I reached out to a colleague of mine who works it with VEDA Vermont. At V E D A, it used to be V I D A. Um, Vermont Economic Development. Association, right? And um, she actually sent me back to League of Cities and Towns to make sure we had covered. For any loans there might be for fire stations. And we went through that and realized because we're not a poor municipality, we don't qualify for some of those. And she also sent me to the bond bank, which we're already in touch with. So. Um, they do, VEDA does loan to municipalities, but I didn't have the impression it was a high priority for them. So.
Okay.
Just eh, keep those ideas coming if we can find. Um. Money or, you know, it, in a cheaper way, in an unconventional way, then. Let's, let's just keep thinking.
It, to me, this project came, I mean, we've been talking about it and voting about it for a while. But it just happened like that. I mean, I know. They're coming next week and Chris has been scrambling. And I feel like the pressure on the financial side that.
Yeah.
Better sooner than later to get this going, because before you know it, we're going to be running out of money and we're going to need more.
Okay. Well, we'll have more to report after Friday.
Okay.
All right. Um, and it's a Zoom meeting, so if anybody is here, ten thirty?
Ten thirty.
Friday.
It's correct.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Very well. Questions for Carrie?
I think we picked her brain pretty well.
Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda, Mike Delahanty, first. Constable.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so the only thing I wanted to talk about was earlier today, we had a discussion with Deputy Chief Washburn. Who had spoken to a town resident over by Dewey Field about some uptick in vehicle traffic at the park. Uh, la- later at night. And so I'm suspecting it was some suspicious activity. I don't know what they're up to, um, but. Uh, it came down to obviously securing the gate at night. Um. I was just over there and one of the things that had come up was the sign and it's just. Uh, the hours were eight to ten PM for the gate. So uh, the park, excuse me, the parking open from eight to ten PM. Eight AM to ten PM is what Dewey Field says. So. Um. So yeah, so I guess the, the request would be, can we have the same rules that apply to Northwood? Um, so. No, no problem. So, so yeah, and so when it comes to the, the, we're going to make sure to keep it as safe as possible over there. So we're going to spend some time over that way and make sure the gate gets um, locked. Uh, same time that Northwood does. So we have, we had that plan. But like I said, I was just over there and I saw that was the hours were eight AM to ten PM. So I just, if we could.
Okay.
Keep, but uh.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah. So, no, and that would, it's like I said.
Both mics, this mic.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, but no, that was, that was one of what I wanted to bring up. Uh. Uh, from a safety standpoint, we've got it, but.
Okay.
From a signer's standpoint, that'd be great. So.
Good. Thank you. Questions?
Lock that one in November two.
Okay.
Like November first, we do the same thing there because there is parking in nature, literally if they want to walk the fifty yards.
Yeah.
To enjoy.
Okay.
Have to walk extensively. So that gate can get locked sooner this board. So chooses, I can lock it, I start locking that gate. Now for the season and there is plenty of parking at the front before the gate and then people can walk in. You so choose to do that. Because it's not. Like it gets a ton of traffic this time of year, but we don't use it for any activity in this time of year. So anybody that's going to play tennis or basketball. There's plenty of parking before the gate. So they could just.
No sports there for the school?
At Dewey?
Yeah. Okay, now I. Okay.
We used to play soccer there years ago.
Yeah.
That.
Okay.
Different this week. So we don't use that. It's just public use for the tennis court, basketball court and the playground. Which.
What should recommend? Should we close it earlier or?
What do you think? I don't mind locking it. I mean, because in reality, there's not any events going on that people have to go in and park to watch. There were families going. To enjoy either playing tennis or going to the, the playground. So. I'm okay with it if you're okay with it. Um, because there is plenty of parking.
On this side.
On that side that they can park and then walk down in. It's a little bit exercise.
What's your pleasure, folks?
I'd recommend you lock it sooner and later. That way they will eliminate the uh. Other members of society who like to find.
Okay. Okay.
Unfortunately, that's the.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So I'll instruct Chuck to lock it when he leaves. And if it's locked tonight, then I'll tell Chuck that when he leaves, he'll still lock the gate.
Okay. So people can still access it on foot, but the.
Yeah, there's plenty of parking in the little loop in the, in the beginning.
It's literally a fifty yard walk.
Yeah.
Compared to a, you know, twenty yard walk. Depending on what you were going to do.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that. So this brings up an interesting thing about the fire department moving into Northwood. Do you ever have problems with people parking in that entranceway up there and going for a walk when the gate shut?
Sometimes in the fall or the um, when we s-. Occasionally in the morning, you know, like if somebody doesn't get there to open it. In like on a Friday, there might be some people that park on the road a little bit. I have people that either I open.
We may need to put some signs up for the next year.
Do not block the gate.
No parking on the.
There are already signs.
Yeah.
Up at the front of the gate that there's no parking in front of the park. So there's already sign, we already did that. JP and I took care of that last year.
Okay. Because that, that's going to be, you know, this next year is going to be challenging up there. Yeah. So.
Okay. Anything more for our first constable?
I did, I think uh, Oscar Plagas and uh. The constable were out this last weekend, I'm sure. At uh, quite a busy night, definitely.
Down the Cortina, yeah.
Oh.
Or the south end. Yeah.
Okay, here we go again.
Um. To be completely honest, it's probably, probably the worst I've seen it. Um, it's. It's getting, it's getting tough down there.
Dog in one of those rooms.
I know, no, I, I don't have a dog. What if I did? No. No, uh, no, it's, it's tough down there right now. For sure.
Okay.
Does the state have health inspectors that would.
State will not touch it.
Nobody wants to.
The homeless group there and they don't want to throw those people out on the street.
It's, it's not a good political.
They're playing the game. It's.
All right.
So, I mean.
Let them live and squander and be.
I will say Kevin, Kevin Brown is monitoring. To see if the governor does anything with the deadline that is coming up on August thirty first to end this housing. Voucher program, the, the extension that was provided. If he extends it, then we're back in the same thing. If he doesn't, then it's.
Political suicide either way.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Absolutely right.
The, the, the people are going to scream if you throw them out. And if you don't throw them out and let them stay. Communities like us are going to scream because we have to do.
Um, so speaking of which, you saw in our packet. Item B, which is the letter from the uh, Vermont chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union, which. Cautions us as housing, homeless housing. Units close down, there are, you know. There are court cases out there on people who shelter on public lands and access to public spaces. And the criminalization of poverty. They, it irritated me, I got to say, and I'm a member of the ACLU, full disclosure, all right? Was the fact that they took credit for us repealing our anti-panhandling ordinances. Like they persuaded us. And actually, I think it was John Paul Fagnan and I took a look at it, took a look at the law and decided. That, you know, that they had cited, said this, they're right. And um, so we repealed the panhandling ordinances, but they don't give the town municipalities the credit. For.
No.
Righting wrongs. So um, I was irritated by that. They did say some nice stuff at the very, very end of the letter, but you had to read the whole thing in order to get there. So.
So.
Keep that in mind. ACLU is monitoring. I know the city of Burlington had a huge issue when they closed down some encampments up there. So.
Yes, on public property.
On public property, correct. Right.
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 I don't know if we have any public property where people are living at this point. But I'm aware of.
Okay.
Instead of Ken's on the front lawn out here, not that I want to suggest.
Bleep that out of the recording.
I know. So just be mindful. Okay. Anything more for our first constable?
I'm good. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Edum is town police chief. Kind of overlapped a little bit here.
Yeah. So.
It's with a special meeting with the folks from Cortina, we have, I like to include JP on a.
Oh, yeah.
Mainly, I was down there today. And they've, they're trying to fix the problem. There's some leaks somewhere in the, in the walls. So there's this wetness there. Where the, they take showers and clean up. So one old section of wall is missing. Where all the pipes are exposed because they got to fix them. And it was talked about having to replace all those bathrooms. Uh. Are, are we gonna?
Or they could close the place.
Yeah. The other thing is. Maybe you can't say, I'll ask anyways. Are we, are you going, are we going back to environmental court to make, to change the permit process a little bit maybe or? What I, what I foresee.
That's, that's a discussion the board needs to have. Um, and we, we have the court's decision. Um, we don't know if there, there is an appeal period. We don't know if they're going to appeal that. So we kind of have to sit tight until that runs.
So the reason I, I mentioned this is. I think those folks are in, if I, if I'm wrong, they can correct me. They're in it for the money. They say they're in it to help these poor people, but I do not believe that.
That place would be a showplace if they were.
Exactly. They have the money to really make things amazing there and they don't. Uh, it's all about the money.
Yep.
They don't care about the problems that are happening. They're trying to keep them as quiet as it can so they don't bother us.
Hmm.
But it doesn't help the, there's, there's some good folks in that place. And they're gonna become the victims of something. If these folks aren't held accountable. I'm not saying the police are the best ones to, to run or tell them how to do their business, but there are other agencies, Bridge Housing that I screamed so loud about at the beginning has been phenomenal. Those folks run that. It's a tight ship. It's clean.
Yep.
Neat, it's fixed up. If something's broke, if there's a problem, they get rid of the problem and new person comes in. That is not the issue, that is not, is what, that is not what is happening at the Cortina. They take everybody. They don't care. As long as the vouchers fill, then they're making money. That's what they're doing.
Is there any D C F presence at all there? Is there any other wraparound services that are there like employment and training? Um
Leave somebody with the state employment training. I know D C F is there when there's an issue.
Uh huh.
Uh Damn.
Yeah. Matt.
Should we, should we have a site visit with you before the next meeting when we're meeting with these folks? That'd be awesome.
Well, that would be.
Walk in, got some mud boots?
I do.
I'll take you through and you can make
I don't need to see it firsthand, tell you the truth. I'm, I'm quite comfortable with what I've heard, what I've seen just going down there to pay my cell bill and J P's um reports on the conditions that are in that building. Um but if, I, I mean that is
That's not an opportunity I'm
On the outside, there's a, it's a campground. There's all these campers down there. They live in, living in the campers also. So there's a whole gamut of stuff on there.
Where are the facilities for the campers?
I do not know.
Are they charging them to?
Out in the backyard.
Okay, so could, yeah, I, I'd like to, I think a site visit would be a very good idea on so many levels.
Yes.
Um and if J P can join us.
The back doors that we said need to be closed, I was down to tell everyone was wide.
Okay.
Where are all our state representatives that got elected and all those other people? That come in here and talk when they wanna get elected, they all need to be part of this. If we're gonna go down there, then, then there's people that can influence what's going on in Montpelier, need to see this firsthand. They need to see how people are being forced to live. Some by choice.
Yep.
And others because they have no choice.
Right. But I know that Bridge Housing does a fantastic job.
Yeah.
They, they do, I'm impressed by them. And they've had some difficult people that live there, but they handle them very well.
They have somebody on site.
This is
That works for the agency.
Right.
And, and they retrain the people so they learn how to live in an apartment.
Right.
You can't have a hundred and forty rooms rented to homeless and displaced people in one environment and expect that to go smoothly.
Yeah.
They are putting the fence up. I'll give them that. It's taken them a year.
Only took them a year.
Well, I mean, the, the gist of the ACLU letter
Yeah.
Is also where are the state services to support these people? And that's kind of
Well, and, and they need to send, you know, that needs to go to Montpelier because homeless situation and they blame a lot of it on COVID, which I think um probably added to the problem, but the problem's always been there. But the fact that these are not just Vermont homeless, these are homeless from anywhere, anywhere. They show up in Vermont and they don't have anything in the state helps them out. That program needs to be tightened and there needs to be a long range program. This is just going three or four months out of whack. And since they extended the program at the end of April or whenever they did it till now, there's no work on how we're gonna make a permanent solution to this.
That's true.
And, and it's not a permanent solution. It's not gonna happen in a year.
No.
And we had a new influx of people like that moved in there, it seemed.
Really?
So now we're at, we had
Down.
Of the hundred and forty seven calls we got this month so far, this month's not over. Uh ninety one percent of them were from the south end of town. So.
So, Matt. What's your idea? Who should, who should go? How, how? Who should be there? Who um?
Because many board members can go and the chief and probably J P if he's available.
How you, how about elected representatives?
Oh, sure. If they'll show up.
Yeah.
I'd pressure them pretty hard to come.
Yeah, they all wanna get elected and they all wanna serve the community and they talk a really good thing. But now, now there's a need here and something's gotta be done.
I'd tell the governor to show up.
We could invite the governor.
Yeah, when Harold and C X wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, there you go.
Very good.
You get pretty nervous when the Herald comes around.
Yeah, well
Anybody that's gonna put something on the news.
Person to get this set up. Would you do that? Set up a site visit working with Bill? And then we'll get the word out to folks.
How much time do you guys need?
I mean, to be honest, I wouldn't give them a huge amount of lead time.
Yeah.
Sometime next week?
What?
Sometime next week?
Sometime after next Monday.
After next, maybe Wednesday or Thursday, cuz it might get seven days I can hang.
I know, I know. That's it. Look pretty good.
Hanging takes priority.
All for everything. I'm, I'm sorry, but um you know, and like I said, I don't, I don't need to see this. I, I'm well aware and, and
Yeah.
Um
Uh the place was rough the last time I was down there and that's when the boiler room blew up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it hasn't gotten better.
It's gone. Yeah, it's been a long time.
It was much better then than it is.
Yeah. I mean, I, I shop at Hannaford's down there. So I've been in the area and sometimes I cruise around to see what's going on.
Oh, it's, I've got a busy schedule the next couple of weeks, but I could talk to you about what works for me and
Okay.
Shooting email. Uh they did have, the D S P did have an incident uh at Hannaford's. I won't go into a lot of detail, but it was, it could have been very serious, but they took care of it. Uh they brought charges. I believe the charges dropped because the almost the crime didn't match up to what they charged with, but it could have been a very, very serious matter. Uh hopefully the feds will step in and be able to do something. Somebody like the A T F will be able to take care of this problem rather than
Well, I'm still gonna shop at Hannaford's by God.
Yep.
So
Exactly.
You guys have, you know, the direct controls you guys are doing is in Mike and Jay, everybody's working out. I mean, that's making a big, that presence makes a big difference.
It does.
So.
But, but that's not the, that's just a Band-Aid on, you know, you're just trying to get by.
If they keep this up. Realistically, three more people would not be out of the question or not be out of the realm of possibilities for us to be able to work more, spend more time down there.
I can do, are there three more people out there to hire?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just telling
So that's, we're back to the same dilemma that we had before.
So along that note, Mary, I had this conversation with Ed um that come budget time, if he's looking for at least one new person, I'd support that.
Okay.
Um I, I think that, me, and we may have to do it in increments.
Yeah.
I mean, you, I think you could have double what you got and you'd still be taxed. You, you would just maybe be able to have time off where you didn't have to get called in to go to something stupid.
Yeah.
Um but I think that we really
It's a point now where you need we need two people at the same time working. Cause one takes somebody into custody.
Yeah.
We don't have our station. Even if we did have a station, we need somebody to literally sit on the person. So something, you wanna make sure the person we have in custody stays safe. While another officer does his job. So it's hard to type and do all the things you have to do, all the paperwork you need to lodge somebody. Plus keep an eye on a camera to make sure someone doesn't hurt themselves in the process of doing it. So that's
Okay.
Five, six years ago, I would have never thought this would ever happen in the town. But here we are.
And we gotta deal with it.
Yep.
But, you know, and, and maybe between now and budget time, you can put some feelers out there and see which, what's what, if anybody wants to work for the town or Um it's, it's an expanding situation that we do not have control. We're just passengers on the bus here and we gotta do the best we can. Cuz
Alright.
There's no help in sight from anywhere.
That's ahead of that. Uh we had seventy seven calls to service, eleven of those were, and eleven traffic stops. So we're pretty busy the last couple of weeks. Uh and again, most of it was in the south end.
The fireworks for townwide celebration went well.
They were, it was fine.
You're very lucky.
I missed the, I missed the, the party. I'm sorry, I had some work I had to get done.
Yep.
And uh but
The speed cart was there, top speed was seventeen miles an hour?
At you.
No. No, when, when I got beat by that little kid last year, no, I haven't tried it again. No. Don't laugh.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions of our chief? Alright, so we'll look forward to an email from you setting up a site visit.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, Barbara Norris Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Skip over J P.
Did I skip over J? I did. John Paul Fagin, Health Officer. Um clerk of the works for the Public Safety Building and Second Constable. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Uh so pretty exciting news with the station. Tomorrow morning I'll be meeting with the uh people from the power company and the general contractor at the station. We're gonna figure out power questions. Um and then the doors, as you heard, are coming off Thursday. The building would be pretty much empty of anything uh worth looking at after Thursday, but we'll keep a close eye on it over the weekend. Um they may locate a job trailer sooner than next Tuesday, but definitely by next Tuesday, the job trail will be there. They're hoping when they do the power disconnect, they can coordinate it with a power connect to their work, work trailer. That would be a home run for them. Uh so that's all I have there on the building. And we do have that request out to uh get
Yes.
Schedule of expected payment so that we can help with the planning on that.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And then um as far as what we're experiencing down at Dewey, we, we uh, why my comment earlier? The gate has to at least be closed because what, what I'm finding when I'm around town is sometimes there's a strange car in the neighborhood and they're just looking for a place to do whatever it is they do. And they see a long path, a long road, you know, kind of rural with an open gate. It's in the middle of the night. It's kind of an invitation to them. So I, I think we can work something out so that perhaps the first person to the call swings the gates open and the last person to leave swings them shut, that kind of thing. Um because we're gonna now put Dewey on our gate closing uh efforts in the evening. It, it probably takes a couple of weeks for people to get used to it, but I would suggest that Dewey be posted with the very same rules as Northwood. Um and that is uh dawn to dusk. Dusk is a floating concept, as you know, during the summer and sometimes towards the end of July, dusk doesn't really actually come till nine thirty, quarter to ten. So uh that's when I usually go out to do Northwood. It would be really convenient to be able to, to do Dewey in that same loop at dusk. Um and that way there, we can keep the, the properties as secure as we can. The people that go in the the people that go in the parks to carry on, they're not the people that are gonna park outside the gate and walk into the park.
Okay, just for the sake of conformity, and so we have it in the minutes, um how about a motion to post Dewey dawn to dusk as well?
But move.
Yeah.
Motion's made.
Well, there's a, there's a, Mary, excuse me, just a minute. If we could just adopt the Northwood Park rules because there's a list of them as you go in. One of them says you can't be there after dusk and if you are, you're trespassing. That's important. Uh the other says if you're here after dusk, your car can be towed. And then finally that, you know, the park closed. All of that list of rules we have for Northwood would work just as well at Dewey.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, so Kurt moves to adopt the same rules for Dewey as at Northwood, it's been seconded by Joe. Discussion?
So earlier we talked about with Mike and Mike about just locking Dewey. So the plan is to lock that gate as of when?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning and it'll be just locked.
Oh, I can
Oh, so you So Mike, would you just, would you just open the, would you just open the Dewey gate if somebody had an event going on?
Yeah, so at this point in time, we would normally shut it like November first anyway. So we're not, there's nothing going on there now. And if there were, then of course I would open the gate and and go from there. That's not a problem. But we don't have anything scheduled for that park from now until next spring when baseball and all that starts kicking in there. So like I said earlier, this, I will get the signage and post it right at the front. That's not a problem. That's, I don't know why I didn't do it before, but I will take care of that. But as of tomorrow, there's no reason why we can't just lock the gate and keep it locked because there's plenty of parking within the park before the gate that people that still wanna enjoy the park have that ability without any much of a you know, a twenty yard, thirty yard inconvenience of walking a little further. They can still enjoy the park, but it will keep the cars from going in there deeper and uh becoming less obvious from the road.
Well, I mean, if that'd be a home run.
Then you don't have to go over and lock and unlock it. I already texted Chuck and told him tomorrow the gate is to be locked and he locks it when he goes and he unlocks it when he goes in and he locks it when he leaves. And so that from here on out will suffice until we get to the spring.
Okay.
I don't have a problem doing that. And I'll get the sign in.
But
I'm all about my neighborhood watch, but the gate anyway. So it wouldn't have been a big deal, but it'd be great if, if you can keep it locked and unless you need it open.
Okay. So we've got to post the same rules at Dewey as at Northwood, but also to lock the gate at Dewey. Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Aye. Motion carries. Good, thank you. Uh, anything else? Hey, um I've been noticing that there are certain properties that have been problematic in the past. Um that are, are now showing that um people are entering the properties um through doors that have been jimmyed open or plywood pulled aside. I'm thinking of the um Gleason Road intersection with Route Four property. And others, I think there's some over here in Center Rutland. Believe it's the same property owner. Um
No.
So if you could, you know, kinda check into those, I, with cold weather coming, there're gonna be places where people are gonna be moving in and trying to establish a place to live.
I sure will. That, that's an excellent suggestion. Um I'm working on the, I've got the uh, the mall issue in mind as well as Cortina. Um the state has really um hamstrung the, the local health officers when it comes to any kind of uh inspect and enforcement on facilities that are providing rooms for homeless people. You may recall that and I don't remember the timeframe, but we had a sewage backup in the Cortina.
Yes.
And I, and I observed sewage in two rooms. And so I issued an order that the rooms be vacated and that they not be reoccupied until they provided me with a letter from the appropriate professional saying that the rooms had been properly taken care of, disinfected and whatnot. Um and uh my supervisor overruled me on that and they issued a letter saying that we don't have health officers don't have the authority to close rooms like that or to issue rooms, you know, issue orders that you can't occupy the rooms, which it's not my reading of the statute, but um so that any complaints that I'm now getting, I am sending to my supervisor. And they don't tell me what they do with them. They don't even let me know if they followed up with them. We had a recent complaint that uh people were seeing rats on the property. And so I made sure that I put them in touch with my supervisor on that, but other than that, they pretty much said it's off to these uh facilities that ours, that my supervisor, regional health officer is gonna handle it.
So what, are you planning on being at the site visit once we get it set up?
Yes.
Good. And if we manage to have some elected officials there besides us, um could you make sure you raise that point? Because that's another example of the state not backing up the locals.
Yeah, no, I, I most certainly will. Um
Thank you.
They're not even following their owner.
I know, that's
No.
Oh, speaking of which, J P, um did we, i- isn't it about this time every year when we reauthorize you as the local health officer?
It's a three-year appointment, Mary. I, I
Okay, good.
I think you did it last year and I think it's good for three years from when you appoint me.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that was in place. Thanks. Any questions of J P?
I have one.
Yep, Matt.
J P, you uh simulated an email a couple of weeks ago. Uh that's Uh, that's something you, you wanted to post to the town website. Yeah. And he took a quick look at that, and I just noticed right off that the website that it it was referring to was something that had described itself as a business. And I don't know, I didn't really wanna get into it, try to vet it myself, but, uh, I guess I'm wondering, is there a similar, uh, like government resource we could point to on the topic? Or has anyone else vetted who these folks are? That kind of thing.
Uh, just give me a second, because I just got this, i- it's, uh, it is a nonprofit corporation. It's called addicted.org.
Yeah, I think they dis- I don't think they describe themselves as a nonprofit though. I think they describe themselves as a business, which just made me think, okay, well, start poking around here. Where, where are they gonna be directing people? Are they trying to, you know, i- i- they have programs here to make money or whatever, which, you know, is fine, but I just didn't think we wanted to get into the business of trying to vet who these folks were and what their outfit was.
No, that's a, I think that's a great get, Matt. I, the little bit that I looked into them saw that they were, uh, I thought they were an educational nonprofit, but, um, what I can do is maybe go to a federal government health website and get some information. Because I did very much appreciate the board supporting us, trying to get information out about the problem to our people, you know, to our residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, take another look. I, I may have missed something. Uh, I thought that, uh, my initial impression was, it seemed like they were maybe trying to look like a nonprofit when they weren't, so that made me uncomfortable.
Right, alright, I'll follow up with that, and, um, I can let you know how I make out at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, JP.
Okay, have a good night, folks, thank you.
You too. Alright, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission. Chair.
There you go.
Good evening.
Yep. The video is, is.
You're freezing up.
You're breaking up, Barbara.
Not freezing up, oh boy.
Can you, can you turn off your video, just do audio?
Okay, and give that a try, is better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, okay, so, um, couple of things, I thought I'd start with the, the Pocket Park in Center Rutland Falls, remember that? Um, not much to report there, but GMP is still going through the relicensing process and making progress with that, although it's, it's quite glacial. Um, the latest on that is there's an environmental assessment being done right now for the, the feds, and that may be done by October. And, um, then GMP is going for water quality certification. That may take until next April. They're back on, and they, they still need to do the historical preservation work there on the site. And they're in the queue, the queue is really long due to all of the flooding, uh, recently in Vermont and checking on the site, so, um, they're hoping to get to that later this year. Uh, so, so we have a little more waiting to do on that. Um, the Planning Commission, um, does not meet again until September fourteenth, so we won't be doing anything with short-term or long-term rentals. Um, but we will take that up and, and, and work on that, on that night. And if you have any guidance on that, um, let us know. And the Planning Commission was glad to be part of the townwide celebration.
That was great, thank you. Yeah. And the Energy Committee Group, um, which was partially the, the Planning Commission and partially the Select Board. Um, the nice displays there, and we had Brock there, we had Ace Noble Hardware. I don't know if Mike Rowe got as much weed whacked or mown as he wanted, but, um, we tried. Um, and, and I thought the totally cool thing was the bicycle that lit up the different types of light bulbs. I don't know if you, or you didn't see it, but, uh, did you try it, Kurt?
I didn't try it, I saw it.
That was, that was awesome. I didn't try it either, but I'm sensitive to things, you know, like pickleball and such at Northwood, so I have to be careful. Um, so thank you all for all of the planning that went into that.
I got to take the F one fifteen light. Very much enjoyed that.
They were all pedaling on the bike, I was over there burning up diesel fuel like a real American. It's gonna be a tough habit.
And, and most of those exhibitors, uh, were, most of those exhibitors were local. Uh, GMP came from out of town with the two electric vehicles, but, uh, and beep the, I think the, the bicycles with the lights, that one, yeah, that was at Vermont of Town. All the others are based in this area.
Okay. Good. Anything for, uh, Barbara? For the Planning Commission? Okay, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. And a big thank you to Mike for making the townwide celebration happen.
Oh, well, you guys did a great job.
Very, very.
Um, the only thing, um, I did drop off extra food to, uh, the mission, they were very grateful.
Good.
We gave some to the highway guys, and we gave, uh, equal amount to the fire department, which Bill picked up the other day. The only thing I think that's still there, but it's in the entryway, is the grill for the fire department, but it's undercover. I'm assuming you're probably gonna, no, you use it at Santa Roland, so whenever you wanna get it, you have a key, you can pop in and grab it. So, big thanks to everybody, it was a great day. I'm impressed by the number of people that showed up, considering what else is going on and the weather. Um, Kurt, I, you know, I think I could have crawled faster than the tractor, you know? Like, what the, you, you know, I didn't know in two hours you could only make four runs with that tractor in the park.
I was giving it all ahead.
I know you were, Scotty, I took it for a ride myself. So, we're fixing that problem with the tractor. I think we know what it is. Um, disc golf is great, uh, black football, soccer, those signups are ongoing, school starts tomorrow. So, things will start to kick off for the fall, soon as I have the schedules, I'll post them for Bill to, uh, put on the webpage so people can go check out our kiddos in action. Uh, we have a tremendous amount of signing up already, so that's good. Um, the, the saddest day for me ever, every year for the past twenty years is the day that the pool is closed. Um, that happened on Saturday and Sunday. So, if you went by Saturday, it looked kinda okay. If you went to work on Monday, you looked down and were kinda had a little tear in your eye, 'cause that means that snow's coming very shortly, and the pool is closed.
Summer's coming now that school's starting.
Yeah, exactly. I know, exactly.
Not sure that with us.
So, we're, uh, that's all, uh, put away and, and good to go. The wood chips arrived today, that was, uh, thanks for Teddy on the spot. And the, the rubber chips came today. He was, uh, gonna pull the guy over, 'cause it was six tons in a tractor trailer truck. And if he didn't make the left at Northwood, he was getting a ticket. They were supposed to call me and let me know, and nobody ever did. And Teddy's like, hey, this guy's for you, and I'm like, they were supposed to give me an hour's notice and have a lift, so I called Dave and he dropped what he was doing, came up with the loader and lifted the stuff off the truck, and, you know, big thanks to those guys for last minute, um, and for Teddy catching it, otherwise guys would have been sitting there with a tractor, trailer, waiting, and they were supposed to call me, but regardless, it's there, it's good, and we'll get that playground finished and the swings up shortly, as soon as I can move three hundred pounds of forty-pound bags of rubber chips. So, I, I got a plan, we're all good.
Okay.
Um, other than that.
Do we have to hire the eighth graders again?
Hire? No, that's called community service. Yes, we, we have. We call it community service. You have to give back to your community, you don't always get paid for it. Other than that, I don't have much, um, it's still growing, so I'm still mowing, and that's kinda the way we're going right now. Um.
Well, I gotta say, for the first time ever, I played disc golf.
How'd you like it?
I liked it. Um, my daughter and her friend, and the three of us played, who knew that you don't use a frisbee? You have to have a little disc, and there, there's a driver, and there's a putter, and there's a meat inter-
Yep.
Who knew that? So, we got, and we just took turns playing it and had a great time and decided we, you know, it's, if it is in the Olympics, we would definitely be the team to beat, so.
So, we, that gets beyond, now that we have eighteen, it gets beyond use, and there's talk of us hosting a tournament next summer um, to draw more people in, because now that we have eighteen holes. And when it first started, I would see people with backpacks, and I'm like, okay, they're going in the woods, they're going drinking, is what I'm thinking. 'Cause I wasn't, I mean, I knew disc golf, I threw a frisbee, and at no extent, but if you ask them to show you what they have, they have like two dozen discs in their backpacks.
Yeah, and they have little slots on the side, so they can pull it out.
And they're, so, I know all the disc people, 'cause they're walking around with a backpack.
Yeah.
And you can see the discs in the back, and they're, they're going at it, which is great, which is what it's there for.
That's right.
And it's just adding another feature or layer to the park.
But, but when we got a little turned around, they were kind enough, they're nice people, they were kind enough to point us in the right direction. And when we announced that we were gonna be on the Olympic team, they were okay with that, you know, didn't feel threatened or anything, so.
The sign, the signage is getting, uh, the main sign is getting replaced to show all eighteen, and you just go up and take a picture, and then you kinda know where you are. And then the other signage for each hole will come over the winter, 'cause volunteers are doing that, taking their time to draw the maps. So, we'll, it'll all be hunky-dory by next spring, but it's playable and people are there.
Will you teach our kids how to play this in P E?
We play, we do frisbee all the time, and we do frisbee golf. I do frisbee golf as a unit.
Okay.
So they know what we'd have to get very quick.
Or you go to Dick's or Walmart, and you just go in the frisbee golf section, and you get a driver, a putter, there's, it's really simple. Well, they didn't, okay.
They said, summer's over, we don't stop it, but Dick's did have a few sets left.
So, early spring, you go pick up and have it, it's a great walk, it's.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I think the course itself is close to two miles.
Had a vendor come, uh, last week, and he played like the front nine. And he said, I said, well, there's a back nine now, and he's like, there is. And he said he's got some app on his phone that shows all these different disc golf courses.
Yep.
And he couldn't find a rural town one, so I don't know if that's a thing.
That's weird, because I would find people, like, coming up to the park, and I'd be like, seeing them play, I'm like, hey, where are you from? I stop and ask. They're like, oh, from Massachusetts. I'm like, well, how'd you hear? He goes, oh, well, we found it on an app. And we knew that you were here, so we decided we were in town to go mountain biking, but we love disc golf, so we're playing disc golf. Hey, where can we eat? Oh, well, I would go here, so, a lot of interaction that I have with people like that, so it's on something.
Okay.
I don't know what, but they will, they will promote it, because, you know, we built it.
Sounds like another state visit to me.
But yeah.
Warn it, it's a meeting of the board.
So I think you should go out and ha- you should go out and play, I mean, it's, it's a lot of fun, I mean.
It is.
And a lot of time and energy and volunteerism went into that, and and so that, that's just another part of the park.
And the signs that you replaced the Scout Slate signs with are unbelievable.
Thanks.
Yeah, tho- those are wonderful.
Yeah.
So, perfect choice.
Hopefully they won't get broken.
Yeah, no, they gotta work at it if they're gonna.
Now they have it on file, so I can just reorder whenever I need, but, yeah. And I think, uh, unless you guys have something, I don't have much else. Unless you've got something you wanna. Bro, I did receive last week, um, at Northwood, uh, in talking with our, um, vendor, who does the spreading, he said, why don't you give it a, 'cause we have the slice seeder, so I, he said, why don't you go by halfway through August? See what happens, so I did receive that to see if that helps out for next spring. Next spring will be the, will tell me if what we did kinda worked a little bit.
So, I went down and looked at that a while ago, and it looks like now the grass is wanting to grow up in the diamonds too, so is that another?
Oh, so what happens is after baseball's over, I let it go, so, in the, I actually just, Jason and I were just talking in the highway, that's one of our jobs, is we rode it till it and drag it, so that when spring comes, you just put the bases in and go. So, that will get taken care of. We rode it till that and graded out and make it fine. But nobody uses it over the summer, so it's just one less thing to go out there and drag
Yeah.
dust around and around.
Not this year.
So.
No dust this year.
Yeah, no dust this year, but in years past, it is a dust bowl.
Yeah.
And so, I let it go, and we till it every year, so that's why it does look like that. Yep, it's done on purpose. So.
Anything else?
Alright, awesome.
Thank you very much.
You.
Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Hey, put something fun.
Oh, good.
Boy.
And thank you for turning the bench around, thank you.
Who knows, bench comes with directions.
We had it exactly backwards. Exactly, we couldn't have made it any more backwards, right.
And if somebody didn't tell you, would you ever know?
Never.
No, and it didn't matter, because it was pulled out, so you could just walk around the bench, it was fine. But.
Yep.
Alright.
So.
Alright, for those who are, um, watching us, we have received the Name the Truck submissions.
Well, you got a lot there, a lot more than last year.
Yeah. So, these, actually, this isn't a complete list, because um, the ones that are on here are the ones that gave us contact information. I still have another, probably twenty-five percent more of these that were just a name on a piece of paper, so I didn't include them on the list, because.
Okay. So, we've got three vehicles?
Three, pick any three, I'm leaving it up to you guys.
Alright.
This, this will be your fault.
Need to have pictures of this, Tony.
I like clash. I think clash is just perfect.
And they're not supposed to clash with anything, Mary. That's bad.
There's no error in that.
It's same, same difference.
Well, rubble is even worse. What's Kakarot?
No idea.
I do like salt liquor. So, how do you wanna do this, folks?
Who did the choosing line? Did we do it last year, or did we let Dave do it?
No, I think you guys did it.
You did?
I think.
No, I thought you did. I thought you picked one you liked.
Oh, maybe I did.
I don't know.
I can delegate authority really good. Or responsibility, however you wanna do that.
Well.
How about, how about we circle our options?
Last year, you're right.
Yeah.
Circle the options, and we passed it into Dave, and he compiled. Right, okay.
Narrow it down to just three.
These aren't for any specific truck, they're just named.
Yeah, we're just.
And then you're gonna stick them on whatever.
I mean, really, bumblebee, which truck is that? It, it has to be the Elbe. You know, um, red rusty dumper, we pretty much know which that one would be, you know, but.
Oh, okay.
No, that one confused me a little bit.
There's a mag.
So there's one red, one yellow, and something else.
There's two reds and a yellows.
Didn't we, so, the town truck supposedly already named, right? Didn't we name the town truck?
No, that was a, a, a disaster on my part, 'cause I was trying to actually figure out how to put something on the plow.
Yep.
And then I realized that the state, when they do it, they actually put like a little sign-type thing on the sideboard.
Of the truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm like, how am I gonna put this on and not like plow it off in the first storm?
Leave it on a mailbox somewhere.
Yeah, or leave it, yeah. So, we never really completed the transaction, I guess.
Okay, is everybody marked up there? Alright, I got my three.
Alright, and I'll do the same thing with the, with the highway guys, and whoever's first, second, and third will, will run with it.
Pencils down. Fold your papers, pass it to your left.
There's really too many good options.
It's intelligent, people.
And I'll tell you that most of these, I could tell by, you know, like the writings, not, not that everybody's writing is great, but these mostly were done by little kids, which is, last year it was probably fifty-fifty.
My writing.
I didn't say, I said not everybody.
How many times did you vote?
I never got a tractor.
She did, she came in to get food.
Yeah. That's a quick, quick lap.
Okay, so.
All right. Back to serious business.
Yes.
Serious. Um, so we spent, uh, a pretty good portion of last week doing prep for that, putting all the trucks together and that whole thing.
Thank you very much. And thank the, the highway crew for that. Yeah.
Uh, we did spend, uh, four hours on, I believe it was Tuesday last week doing flagger training, which everybody needed, including myself. Um, we did, uh, we spent a whole day over at, um, Georgette Park, uh, doing a training for, uh, pulling trees over with ropes. And what that's all about being, we'll get a, a tagline up into a tree and then pulling a rope through and the whole thing.
Who did that?
It was, uh, the state of Vermont, believe it or not.
Good.
Yeah, it was a, a, a forester for the state of Vermont from Montpelier came down and, um, it was, it was a really good thing. I was, you know, Chris has done it when he worked for trees. So he kind of had an upper hand on it, but the rest of us were, it was all brand new. So that was, that was a really good course. Uh, we spent a day on Old Wood Road that was, uh, just cutting back uh, over, you know, trees and brush and all that stuff is like a tunnel up there. So, uh, Old Wood Road and Bittersweet was cut back. Um, we spent all day today on Post Road doing the line striping for the school, for the crosswalks. And we did the intersection, uh, at, uh, Post Road and Post Road Extension. Um, repainted that whole thing. That's actually worked out pretty well for the, the last year. Uh, so we got a little bit of painting left to do, but not much. And, um, that's about it. Except for committee meeting.
Right. Um, so highway committee meeting.
Yep. Well, I'm thinking, you mentioned line striping, East Pittford Road where it was paved. Well, doesn't the state do that?
And so I talked to this, the representative from the state because I, I, he sent me and he sent everybody an email back in the spring and said, let me know what roads you're paving. So we don't paint them and then you pave them. So I sent him and said, we're looking at doing East Pittford Road. And Town Line Road is still on the list at the time. So I talked to him right after East Pittford was done. And he said, okay, we'll get it on the list. Hopefully we can be there in the next couple of weeks. And that didn't happen. And then the bad weather and the flood and the whole thing. So I don't, I have no idea where they are. And, uh, Town Line hasn't been painted yet either.
Guys, but just somebody mentioned, asked me about that lives up there. And so I said.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's totally up to them. And I gave them the green light on that quite a while ago. So.
And I kind of said, uh, I think this is in the state's hands now.
It is. Yep.
Cause they do the paving for it. Okay. Yeah. Striping. Um, so we met Dave and I, um, last Thursday to open bids for the sidewalk paving and we had received no bids. Any update on that, Dave?
Not really. I, I talked to Tim Rice from Wilk. He said he didn't get a bid, a spec. So, uh, we gotta figure that out. And I said, can you even do it? And he said, I'm not even sure because we're about a month, five weeks behind right now. And it's a, for all intents and purposes, it's September.
Right.
So he said, if we do it, it'll be late, but I can't guarantee we can do it. So I'm actually going to reach out to our contact at the state and see if I can get an extension because of this kind of stuff.
Oh.
Yeah.
They, they would be firsthand knowledge of weather related problems with the state.
Um, I gotta reach out to him and see if we can get an extension into Joe I or something.
Yeah. So you, you probably will get the preliminary work done this fall.
Trying to, yeah.
So. I guess it's, that's actually not a bad thing if that goes through a winner either, you know, if it's gonna settle or whatever. I mean, you might have to do a little regrading in the spring and be good. So, okay. So that was the big thing that, um.
Will it be walkable?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be usable. It just won't be paid.
Okay.
Yep.
And with the snow blower, you could keep it clean this winter.
Right.
Oh, you should be fine. Okay. Um, so that was option one. Then we talked about the dire road. Um, I see no benefit to the town to continue ownership of the road. And I suggested to Dave if he was okay. Eddie Dumas happened to be in the office, so I asked him to sit in on that discussion. And my recommendation and Dave is that we give the road up. Um, notify the two landowners, which are United Ag and Turf and Mr. Mandela. Uh, if he has, Mr. Mandela is the one that's going to have an issue, which I figure will get him here to a board meeting. And then we're going to tell him that he can't keep saying, no, no, no. And at some point he's going to have to invest some money to protect the property. Um, we've got a sizable amount of investment already with the blocks and half, three quarters of a day's work for our four guys to barricade that off. So.
And I, I received a call yesterday from Chris Gannon from GMP and they have concerns over if they have an issue down there, how do they move the blocks?
Right.
You know, two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever. How, how do they move the blocks? They, you know, if they have, if there's a gate and they can double lock the gate and they have access to the gate, they're okay with that. But the blocks are not going to work for them.
Right. And that is the three phase that feeds that, uh, I think that goes right down to the thumbnail.
Yeah, that goes them over.
Everything down through the school and everything. So that.
Oh, the three phase.
That three phase power that's coming down that way. So take the blocks out, give the road up and let Mr. Mandela deal with it.
All right. So there is a process that we have to go through. So let's.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is that? Are you on board with that?
I don't see any reason not to. I'll raise recommendation of that.
We, so other than the blocks, during the winter, GMP's got to get in there. They got to deal with the snow. Right. Because the town does not maintain that at all. So.
Going to have to move the blocks.
So, so if we take the blocks out, give the road up, um, cause in by law, according to the information we got from Kevin, you can't lock the gate.
Right.
You can put the gate there, but you can't lock it.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's what that, that's what that stuff he sent us. It said you can have a gate across it, but you can't lock it.
And that's for a pent road. If we chose to go that step, we would still have to go through the process.
Right. And you can't. So there's no sense. So just give the road up and I'm sure that's going to generate some discussion and then we'll see where that goes.
Okay. Um, Bill, for our next meeting, would you find out from Kevin, the legal requirements? Cause I know we have to warn it and post notice and all of that.
And I think we have to notify them.
And maybe a site visit. I know we've done site visits.
Yeah. But, okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, we talked about the quarter line road maintenance. Um, that came back up at a board meeting in Clarendon, the residents. Um, Kurt had, you want to report on that, Kurt? Cause you had a little more information about the.
Yeah. So from the download from their meeting last night that I heard, uh, the quarter line people, um, showed up with a petition to the Clarendon Select Board. Um, like fifty some odd signatures, um, you know, wanting this type of agreement. And, uh, I guess we'll see where that leads.
Was there a select board meeting last night? What time did they meet?
Six o'clock maybe.
Yeah. That's why. Why our meeting.
Why?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. So one of, one of the residents is up there, um, a residence, uh, Shelley Lutz.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she sent me a text message today and told me about the meeting and said that, um, their road commissioner slash select board member, um, is going to try to reach out to the highway committee and have another meeting. And he doesn't want to do the work, but he has some suggestions for us. So there may be something, something more to come. I, that's basically what she said. So.
I don't know what suggestions. You know what needs to be done, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
Yeah. The ideal was convenience. They're there.
Well, I think when you're sitting in a room full of fif- fifty people that are not really happy, you say, well, okay, yeah, well, I'll make a phone call.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, anyway. Um, and, and I from a, I don't know, we, uh, offer or a, um, I can't think of the word I want to use, point, um, the road commissioner is, has two hats. He's a select board member and he's there. So I'm not sure his, he should be voting on his work assignments by the town. So there may be something there for them to look into. Um, Dave talked with Hubbard. So we're all set for the winter plowing.
Oh, good.
Um, one of the things that last winter did, um, bring out was that, um, it will require more than, we had six trucks plowing last year and the residential population was concerned about things not being the same. Um, they're used to the entire town kind of. So going forward, I don't think we'll ever get away from having some additional help for winters. I think a four person town crew and then additional two or three trucks is probably going to be realistic. Um, we don't need to have.
Many complaints last year or?
I think Dave fielded quite a bit that things weren't done on, you know, stuff wasn't done the way it always had been. And, and my explanation, this is growing pains. Um, new road commissioner, new people plowing, um, different routes, some unexpected situations that cropped up at the last minute that we got through. Um, this year will be better, or it should be, we have the potential, um, for that to be better. But I think this winter, if the weather forecast is anywhere near accurate, is going to be like this summer, only it's going to be white and that's going to be a problem. But anyway, we'll see how it goes. Um, we do have three seven yard trucks and two smaller ones and four guys. So we're good to go. Um.
And I go back to the quarter line road.
Yep.
On a different issue. Um, and, and I mentioned it before the meeting, but I should mention it now. Somebody showed me, a resident up there showed me a photo of a fireworks tube in the middle of quarter line road that had been set off. So there were fireworks up there. Just very, I would mention that.
They didn't invite us.
Yeah. No, but I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't hit the tube. Hopefully they removed it, but.
Some of the residents on Cedar Avenue used to do that every four wheel, fourth of July. And I'd be chopping grass all hours of the day and night and coming down and they'd get up and move out of the road so I could go through. And, and then I'd come back and they'd be out there and but, so anyway.
We do not condone use of town roads for shooting off fireworks. Okay, good.
And, and one other thing about not really quarter line road, but since we're in that neighborhood, uh, I went up and had a conversation with Don Haliba.
Yeah.
On Boardman Hill and asked him.
Oh, yeah.
He's a, he's a fun man.
Yeah.
I said, uh, you know, we're talking about closing off that little turnout down there. Would you have any problem with that? And he goes, no, when are you going to do it? I said, uh, I don't, I don't know. I was just trying to get permission. He's like, so he goes, you know, there's car, out of state cars there at two, three o'clock every morning. And I know they're not.
Yeah.
From here. So, so, uh, I kind of have a, a plan to take care of that for him. So.
Okay. Hey, that's where those barriers from dire.
Just, yeah, well. I think a permanent thing is a ditch and a swale and.
That's what, so what my, my plan is I gotta, I gotta go up and do some ditching on quarter line. So all that material is going to go down there. There's a little, there's a culvert that goes under the road. So I'm going to have to, I may have to extend the culvert a little bit and just protect that. And then we'll, we'll run the, the Boardman Hill swale down into that. And then we're, we'll just fill it all up.
And be no.
But I'm, I'm afraid if we just put the barriers there, people are just going to chuck stuff over the barriers. So I'll put a bank in there and
Yeah.
they want to go over the bank. That's up to them.
Okay. Um, we discussed the, um, Mr. Cussell lives up there on Grove Street by the girdan farm. And he would like to see that road, um, a little more of the road taken out. His guys are getting close to getting cremated, creamed every time pulling out. Cause cars on Grove Street drive at forty-five to fifty miles an hour, the sight distance. So he'd like us to take the crown off some more and he's willing to help with that, uh, use his equipment. Um, and Dave and I discussed that maybe we should get somebody like, um, Enman and Castle raining or Otter Creek to go up there and actually design something for us. So, um, and we, if we're going to try to do that next year, we probably should get that done. See, I think put out a request for proposal for, um, what it would cost to do it, to design something for us there, rather than try to go up there and eyeball it.
If we, I don't know.
We did it once and we didn't get it low enough.
Yeah. What was that?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't mind the thought of doing it. I do mind if, if we use somebody like that privately to make sure legal cities and towns is okay.
Yeah. I mean, he just, he's trying to minimize the cost to the town.
Yeah.
And it's to benefit him and his workers. Cause all of their stuff is on the south side of that little crowded road. And, and there are some skid marks here in the road. I noticed this the other day. So we talked about that. Um, so more to come on that. Um, we, I, I don't know if we got any engineering money left. I think we spent a good share of it, but it'll depend on the, what we have from the, um, DHB and what, um, Otter Creek is doing, if there's any left of that sixty. So we can see, um, we got a, a request from someone on the West Proctor Road that wanted us to reimburse them for doing work in the town right of way without a permit. And we just, not, that's not going to happen. They put in a drainage and did a whole bunch of stuff and spent about, was it about three thousand bill? And, um, when Bill explained to them that you have to have a permit for working in the right of way and the fine could probably offset the work done, that probably will go away. Uh, and then, uh, we talked about the wind mirror discuss, uh, development again. I know that they're looking to get that paved. And they want, so if they want it paved and they want to make arrangements with us to discuss this with our paper next year, fine. But there's going to be a lot of stuff involved with that because that's just on them. They gotta pay it, but, um, the, any responsibility or any complaints. You know, that I, I don't know. I didn't know if we want to even get involved. My thought was about, um, you know, offering them, if our contractor would be willing to pave it at the same rate they do the towns per ton and do it when they do the town so that it wouldn't offset it.
It's kind of like what we suggest to the city up on.
Right. And it's kind of what got done at the school. When the school paving got done, it was done at the same time the school paid for that and it was all done. Um, and then lastly, we talked about the replacement of the three fifty truck, um, and more to come on that.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's the truck Dave drives back to forth. That was part of his hiring, um, agreement and we were going to replace it two years ago, kept it during that first winter when we were shorthanded. And then Dave drove it last year. So, um, there's probably a more economical vehicle to be.
Yeah.
Looked at for that. So.
Good.
But that's pretty much, I don't think I missed.
Okay, no.
That covered it.
No action items on there?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Um, any further questions either for the highway committee or our road commissioner? Thank you again.
Thank you.
And we'll anxiously await the results of our poll.
I'll have them for next meeting.
You know, highway committee could just like take that over and make the decision and making it sound, okay. All right.
That's a good thing.
Um, Marcia Chaffee is not on the call. However, um, we do have an item. It, it is a, I don't know. Did you guys get copies? Yes. Okay. So the Lister's office are requesting that we, um, correct an error and complete and errors in a mission certificate. It involved a tax parcel, which is owned by Sean and Deborah Erickson. Um, they were billed as having separate parcels, but it's actually one contiguous land parcel. And, um, they were billed, they were billed more or appraised more. So the Lister's caught the error and they are asking that we sign the certificate allowing them to correct the appraised value of the property. And it looks like, um, if you agree with that, if you could make a motion to someone and then also authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Much as made in the seconded, any discussion? And I don't have anything more than what's right here. So.
Where do you sign there?
Um, first.
She gets to sign right on the front page.
Oh, down here.
Yeah. And then it looks like Carrie has to sign the back.
Yeah, that's all Carrie paper. After that, back there. All right.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. No one opposed, so I am signing it.
Okay.
Okay. Next, Bill Sweet, our town administrative assistant to the select board. And thank you, Bill, uh, for all of your work on our townwide celebration.
Oh, you're welcome. It was a lot of fun.
Oh, speaking of which.
Looked like fun.
Um, thank you now, dear select board. Thank you for the generous donation toward our DC trip. We had fun helping our town at the celebration. We hope Sharon feels better. Thanks, RTS eighth grader. So very nice.
That was nice.
To circulate that.
Uh, so we've covered the packet. We've covered the desks. That's, that's excellent. Um, a couple of things to go over. They had extra. Um, Teresa Emili, uh, from our personnel committee meeting has already coordinated a meeting with Dave. Uh, working on getting one with Ed and VLCT has gone back and forth with who they want to talk to her and with, if we got a person. So they should be all set to go as well. So those, those three introductions are, are done or imminent.
Uh, so raising that, there was a, a personnel committee meeting. Um, Matt Eddy and I met with Teresa. Again, she's trying to review and bring up to date and catch inconsistencies in our personnel policy slash handbook. So we, we will, we don't know how much detail you want on that. It is an agonizingly slow process, um, but she's. An agonizingly slow process, um, but she's trying to help us consider all of the options.
Agonizing long process the first time.
You're right.
Here's what it would be with us doing it.
Yeah, really, it's way better to have her doing it with us.
You know, this is us doing it is. We did our best based on limited knowledge, you know, you do what somebody does it for a living and.
That's right.
We might get it right by the third or fourth draft. I don't think we did too bad.
I, we did okay.
But there are things in there.
But we're, we're pointing out all of the things that we've had difficulties with and she's trying to address them, so she's going to be. You know, visiting with the department head, she's going to visit with Kerry, she's going to visit with Bill and just try and get a handle on. And I guess our question, well, maybe it's my question, but it's our question, how much do you folks want? Do you want to see the? Real-time draft as she's making the changes or what? Do you just want the end or big?
If there's something critical, I, I'm, we're happy because when you get to the end, we'll just read it and.
That's right.
How we get there, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, I didn't sense a lot of excitement there, but that's okay.
You know, it's. It's a difficult process because we have two full-time paid departments, police and highway. And they operate different than normal full-time operations, so. It's hard to put a personnel policy that fits that highway, police, and then the office staff because the office staff is entirely different. And then you've got. Throw in a couple of elected people.
Yes.
And then it really muddies the water, so.
Yeah, and then you pass that to a bunch of volunteer firefighters and.
Yes.
Muddies that even more.
Right, because there, there's a lot of this that doesn't even pertain to it.
And then you pass it to, you know, lifeguards.
And then you pass it on to five board members who are supposedly governed by it and then, then now we're like. All right.
Well, there, there is a real question about whether the, the elected officials are going to be subject to a lot of this, just because.
I mean, is a, is a one-size-fits-all policy smart or should each department have its own policy?
I think you have one policy that. It, it might be that there's a section of the personnel, though, there are some things that are going to cover everybody, but then there's going to be, it's kind of like.
S-codes and keys and yeah.
Right, yeah, right. There are certain things that fit, like there's. Police needs certain things, highway needs certain things, and the office staff and elected officials need other things, so. You, you may have to tailor a section for each one. And, and that's fine. It's kind of like zoning there. It's, you know, that's that thing with zoning. If you read zoning like it's a book, you're screwed. But if you read it as it's a encyclopedia and it fits certain things, it's much easier to.
You're not listening to me.
I've, I've known this all my life. I mean, it's like reading the encyclopedia to find out, you know, how an internal combustion engine, so we read the whole ebook. It, it doesn't make sense to me, but anyway, we're getting carried away.
Saying to me, but he still came to the wrong conclusion.
But it sounds like he wants to come to the meeting. That's what it sounds like to me, like, yeah. We're not, don't say that.
It's raining.
Uh, okay, so.
It's never going to rain again.
Teresa is, we're, we're, we're make, we're, we're, we're moving forward, making progress.
Yes, we are.
Uh, reminder that we are closed next Monday for the holiday. One sixty-seven US Route Seven South, the former Friendly's building. Uh, there'll, there's, I've been getting, I get emails and phone calls almost every day from a variety of vendors. All wanting to know about two eighty-eight roots, uh, it's two eighty-eight South Main Street. Because someone somewhere put on one permit form that address and that's what they all took. It's, they, and they argue with me about the correctness of the address and I ultimately correct them. Uh, Nicole from Enman Kesselring has tried to help get this corrected, but it's, it's tough and, and I don't know who did it wrong in the first place, but man, it's. It's rough.
It's a two fifty thing, isn't it?
It is.
So we don't have to be involved.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, we, we're, we're, they're, they're moving forward.
We're here every day.
It's just amazing that, that they don't, they don't like, they're like, what's the difference? I'm like, well, two different towns actually, but you know, but two eighty-eight South Main Street doesn't exist.
About a mile.
Even in the city, but it doesn't exist, so. There's a lot going on, they're, they're actively moving forward, it's, it's going well. Uh, another, um, repurposing of a building, uh, Spirit Halloween is. Ten days away from opening up.
The what?
Spirit Halloween, they're a Halloween decoration store and they are fully occupying the Bed Bath and Beyond store.
Oh, that's what it was. We were going to go over and peek in the window.
Yeah.
They were.
We could see activity, but we didn't know what it was.
Yeah, they were up in the Home Depot Plaza.
They were in where, um, Ashley, or there were big, they were where Big Lots was, I think. Big Lots is now. Ashley Furniture, yeah.
Okay.
They, they've been in town before, um.
They pop up.
I, yeah, they, 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 they come, they, yeah, so they're, they're a, a really great store. I've, I've had several phone calls with the district manager. They are, they are floored about our lack of permission to do anything really to the building. Um, to the point where she's like, she's calling me back, like, are you sure? Are you sure?
We don't have to approve anything.
Right, she's like, I'm being questioned on, in fact, we don't have to do anything, so. I've sent Division of Fire Safety, Division of Fire Safety, Division of Fire Safety.
Okay, good.
Um, so, so that's, but they're, they're, they're days away from, from being open, so that's going to be, that's going to be really, that's.
It's good somebody moved in there.
Yeah, quickly.
Considering this.
Uh, they'll be there through, usually about a week after Halloween, yeah, but they do a lot of business, so that's good. It's something better than nothing at this point.
That's right.
Um. Work on the website is continuing. We've got some updates to pages, uh, and then there's going to be some big changes coming to layout and we're gonna, so it's, it's under, under progress. We're getting, we're getting some drafts and, uh, a lot of updates to forums to make things easier to get to. Um, we're going to be able to do online payments for, for some permits and rec fees and things like that pretty soon, so that's very exciting. That's moving forward very well. Um, did we need to do a donation to the Foley Cancer Center?
Yes, thank you. Um, each year, Happy Cow ice cream comes and gives away free ice cream at Townwide Celebration. Mark Foley generously did so again this year, seemed to be enjoying it.
He loves it. Oh, he has so much fun.
We have in the past made a donation as to the Foley Cancer Center as a thank you to Happy Cow and Mark, so I would. What have we done in the past?
I want, I want to say five hundred. Was it a thousand? I don't know.
We, we, I'd make a motion that we donate the same amount we did last year. Is that okay? And then we can find it out.
Okay, motion's made in the seconded to donate the same amount as we did last year to.
So we have a, we have a letter we sent them last year. Do we want to do it for next board meeting or do you want us to do, do we need to do it and just get it sent out?
Um. I do need to do, my thank you letters I didn't write either, so another, you know. Consider that when you're voting for chair again, I think.
I have the letter we sent last year.
Yes.
And I can. It's like.
Modify it.
Uh, yes.
Send it to me and if I get my printer working adequately, I'll just generate the letter for everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. So you can just send us an email and generate one copy. We can read the letter and then we'll come in and say, okay, that's great.
Well, I was going to have us individually sign individual letters to all of the folks who participated, which is what we did last.
Oh, you might need several letters.
Hands cramping already.
Okay.
No, no, you get to play president, you get to sign them all. Um, so motion is to donate the same amount to Foley Cancer Center. Thank you, Happy Cow.
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And, um, there's been a few, uh, E nine one one address issues that I've been working on the last. Couple of weeks and, um, one that's kind of come to light, a little bigger one, uh, Gleason Road. Has about twenty houses that are. Wrong, we'll say. They're, 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 when it, when it was done, it was not done correctly. And we can, Mar, Marsh and I talked about some, some things that we, we have, we have another property that's. Just got sold and its address is wrong, so we're going to, we're going to change that now because it's an individual property, but not, not on Gleason Road. Uh, but we talked about. Longer term about maybe putting something in our addressing, we have an ordinance that addresses the nine one one. Address requirement about putting something in there about. When a, when a property is sold, verifying its address at the time of sale, because that's the best time to change it. Uh, but Gleason Road is, is kind of a unique thing because it affects a, a, a bigger number of properties. And we, we can do it as, we can do it and the state's person has, we have the support of them, they're like, but it's. Ultimately up to the board if we want to move forward, so some go up, some go down, but, but there's.
Are, are they all in sequence?
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now, is it the city on one side as?
No, city stops at the transfer station.
Okay.
We're beyond that, so Gleason Road is a big problem. The other one is actually Grover Drive is probably worse. Um, because it was originally two roads and then it was joined and the numbers weren't done correctly to begin with, so that road. The, those two are.
One you want to tackle first?
I, I'm, I'm following it, like, he had, like, Tyler, Tyler is the guy from the state, we, we, we looked at a map, like, he has all the numbers, like, we can just say, okay, these are the numbers, like. It's, it's essentially the hard work, the hard work of identifying them is done. It's just.
Listen into.
Identifying, I, I, you know, I, relaying it to, to the, to the residents and I, and I, I, I fully understand.
It was a pain.
What an inconvenience is to change the number. But ultimately, it is the right thing to do. Grover Drive is arguably worse. Because of the way it was in originally, Gleason Road's not as bad, but still needs to be corrected, so.
You, could you, in the past, we've looked at, I mean, you've produced a map, so could you produce the map?
That was what I was going to.
Stick it in our next packet, please.
So.
I feel doing both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's. I mean, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of them being accurate.
Yes.
And, and there's no getting around it.
Yeah.
Because once you start fudging the system.
It's, it's, it's all bad.
All downhill.
So.
And they're designed for.
Yeah.
Emergency personnel to be able to know. Where they're traveling and how far they're traveling and this has got to be accurate.
It really, it really does matter.
And, and it does matter.
So the one, the one I found the other day, who actually someone came to us and, and a- asked about it because they said their. Post office said one thing and GMP said another and it turns out they were both wrong, but. Um, but the houses were, basically there was a house that was like, there's a house next door to it and the numbers, we think were just. Transposed when they were assigned, so it's just, so.
You know, and people do have checks made and they have stationary made and they have stuff and weigh that against the life or the property and. That stuff all.
And, and I know it's, I know it's not going to be probably very well received globally, but it is important.
Pass bill, don't we identify the residents, do a letter.
Oh, yeah.
And explain to them why, um.
I, I, I have.
And we, and we go in there with this whole thing about, you know, we realize this is an inconvenience.
Yes.
But it is a life.
They actually, the, the state actually has, they have a whole bunch of form letters that they recommend and stuff, there's a whole, there's a whole thing, so.
I'd say we move forward. How much advance does they get?
It's up to us. I mean, it's, we, we could say. On October first, we're changing your number, or we could say on January first, we're changing your number, like, it's, it's, when I, when I tell. The, the state coordinator, like, I've been on the phone with him and he's like, hey, we're going to change this and I watched the thing change on the map, like, it's, it's, he does it like instantly, but. We are, we have a couple dozen issues. He has towns that have like a couple hundred issues, so. We're not in bad shape, but if we fix some of these bigger ones, then we're, it's even better. It's just, it's better all the way around and. Yeah.
Okay.
But we, but Marsh and I, you know, talking about this, this is kind of came, kind of brought a lot of this around again, but about having something. And, you know, whether it's in, in the ordinance or, or something, but just as a, as a, as a, a reminder, but. And ninety-nine percent of them will be, will be good, but there's some we know that are, that are wrong and, and when it's, when you're doing the real estate transaction is the best time to change it. Because someone moving in is going to need to change their address to that new residence anyway, so.
I'm not sure that I agree with that.
Well.
Because that could screw up the whole closing.
Well, could, we could do after, you know, well, yeah.
Yeah.
But i- it, it is, it is important, like, there's, there's a couple on.
I'll agree it's important. I'm not sure that the closing is the best time to catch.
Well, well. But we, but we, we, you know, but discussing a time to, to do that would, would be good.
Time they do a title search right before closing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so if something's in there during that period of time, there should be something that people should be aware of addressing. To make sure the address is a correct address with the property.
I don't disagree with flagging it, but I'm not sure if you're waiting to correct, I don't know.
I don't.
So, but.
Or, or we put something in, uh, mailing the next time the tax bills go out and.
Yeah.
And, and just tell people that we've been having issues with some nine one one address and could you please verify that? The address that you have is a proper one for your.
I was, um.
That's a townwide thing.
Part of my, my article in the circle was, was going to be talking about the.
Something that's sort of related and I haven't heard anything about it in a long time. Where are we with the dispatch center? Whole issue.
This, the last I heard, the state was taking it over. They're going, the state has quietly said.
How did we get that one?
There in the list, I think.
But.
Stillmate.
What's that?
No, that whole.
There was, there was a discussion that the state. Has not admitted that what they did five or six, seven years ago was wrong, but they're going to go back to what they had before that.
We're talking about going back to county dispatching.
Really?
Which would be so much.
But they still have this pot of money out there that they haven't figured out how they're going to allow it to be spent.
Yeah.
So they, it's just. It's kind of not really getting anything done right now.
It's a political nightmare and nobody wants.
I think we raised it whenever we would have a candidate come rolling in, we'd say, hey, watch this dispatch.
And I think what they said was, if there was going to be something that we needed to fund, we had like, we would get like two years notice. Because, because we talked about having to include it in budgets, we'd get like a two, two-year lead time, so and that, there's been no, there was. All talk about it and now there's no talk about it, nothing.
Yeah.
The crisis is still there.
Yeah.
Sure.
It, it, just because we're not talking about it, it hasn't gone away.
Nope.
Oh, you go to bed at night and there's a dispatcher on and you wake up in the morning, that same dispatcher's on the radio.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're.
By the next night, they're still there.
Yep. Oh, I've, I've heard a dispatcher on for twenty-four hours.
But even, even like the LCT's newsletter doesn't even talk about it anymore.
You know, and so.
So obviously somebody opened their eyes somewhere and somebody got yelled at and they're all sucking this all back, hush, hush in it.
They're all hiding in a closet.
Figure this out.
Well, I mean, it's the, the legislature ended, but they're coming back.
Well, they were.
Maybe they just didn't, is there a summer study going on?
They put out a bid for consultants.
There you go.
So I don't know if that ended up going and then they probably got some consultants and said, well, this is stupid.
Okay.
Yeah, go back. It's a sad, it's a sad thing and change, but. It's sometimes things don't happen until there are bodies.
Yeah.
And years and years ago, a fireman got killed in Brattleboro. And NFPA changed the rules that you had to have two in and two out. You have to have two firemen. That was false, that was false.
I know.
So. I don't want to see the state of Vermont, I don't want to see the state of Vermont drag their feet, but that's what ends up. Making this top of the table is when some, you know, we've been lucky. Fire departments are getting dispatched, PDs are getting dispatched, ambulance to get, and so far, no crisis, but.
We, we're, we're just, we had an issue in town. Quite a few years ago that. Didn't really get brought to public light at all, but there was a dispatching issue that. Did not do great things.
Well, you know, come September, October, we start doing budget things. This is sounding like we don't have to budget for it.
I don't think, you know, that, you know, last year I proposed that we did and then the state is saying, well, there's, there's money out there to do this, but they. I, I don't know, there's a pride thing involved and we just don't want to admit we screwed up and we need to go backwards.
We might, we might see some state representatives next week, we could talk to them about it.
By the way, while you're here.